I'd like to call the February 7th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And our first order of business is the invocation by County Manager Ms. Sharon Griffin.
Thank you Chairman Bright and Commissioners, and good morning. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, please be with the Commissioners in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. Bless our citizens, our first responders, and those defending our nation. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance by Assistant Manager Mr. Ben Warren.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our meeting. I'd like to acknowledge Sheriff Miller, our elected sheriff here. Thank you sir for being here, and his chief deputy Colonel Chris Thomas. Thank you both for being here. We ask that all in attendance please set your cellphone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period on the agenda. Item one is the agenda itself. I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two is the consent agenda. Is any item on the consent agenda that any Commissioner would like to have removed for later discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So move.
Here, second. Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're at item three, public comment. Ms. Griffin, anyone signed up?
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman. We have one citizen who has signed up this morning for our public comment period, and we would remind the public that you have exactly five minutes to address the full Board of Commissioners. Please do not direct your comments to any one Commissioner, and please sit down promptly at the end of the five-minute period. I call the speakers in the order in which they have signed up, and we have one today. At this time, I would like to welcome Ms. Susan Passy of 306 Windward Landing in Holly Ridge. Ms. Passy, if you would state your name again and your address as you get to the podium and begin your comments.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Susan Passy. My address is 306 Windward Landing Way, and it's in Holly Ridge, North Carolina. I just wanted to introduce myself. I actually put my name forth for the Animal Advisory Board, and I just wanted to sort of give you just a little background about, you know, my qualifications. I received an animal biology degree, and I'm a businesswoman in this county. I've been fostering for over six years for the Onslow Shelter, and in my free time, I serve the community. So that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much, Ms. Passy. Chairman Bright, that concludes our public comment period.
Okay, we'll move on with item four, which is surplus land. Ms. Laura Jones will present that agenda item. Good morning, Ms. Laura.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The county received an offer on a recently acquired piece of property, surplus property. It's referred to as parcel 004558. The offer was in the amount of $4,435, and it's located off Andemora Road, which is in the Nine Mile District. If approved, the property will be sold using negotiated offer advertisement upset bid process. And if no upset bids are received, then the property will be sold to the offerer. If we do receive any upset bids, a final high offer will be brought back to you for consideration. It is respectfully requested that the Board declare the property a surplus and approve resolution number 22002, which authorizes the sale using the negotiated offer advertisement upset bid process.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Item B is body worn cameras. Department of Justice grant. Sheriff Miller will be here to present that item.
Good morning Commissioners, staff. The Onslow County Sheriff's Office was awarded a grant of $129,537 for the purchase of body worn cameras and related equipment. These funds are allocated, the awarding agency is the United States Department of Justice. These funds are allocated as a 50% reimbursement to purchase 93 body worn cameras, or lease in our regard, related storage, and other related equipment. The body worn cameras will be utilized by deputies in the field, particularly with patrol, civil, and warrant squad deputies, to record interaction with the public during calls for service, paper service, traffic stops, critical incidents, and other necessary interactions. The Onslow County Sheriff's Office believes these cameras will assist the agency in accurately documented investigations and interactions with citizens, uses of force, arrests, and other critical incidents. Commissioners, this issue has been thoroughly researched by myself, my staff as well, and I think the grant is going to be very helpful to maintain the professionalism that we have at the Sheriff's Office, because it's a constant reminder to deputies, to officers, that they are on camera. And in past, when we have evaluated those body worn cameras, they've actually been very helpful in debunking some false allegations that were made against the deputies. But it's also good for evidence collection. We have the District Attorney of Onslow County and other counties, and also the local NAACP endorsed the purchase, or in our case, the lease of these body cameras. They're going to be very helpful in reducing frivolous lawsuits, because cameras tell the truth. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chairman, one of the things, we've done a lot of research on this, quite a few of the Commissioners have, but one of the things that my concern was, was a server. And when I found out, talking to Sergeant Marshburn there and to the Colonel, that we don't have to purchase a server, and I understand if we did, that's over $500,000 or more to store it, that going to the cloud is going to be a big help to us, and it's a good, it's a no-win situation, we have to do this.
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Commissioner. I'm glad that my staff has provided the information to you.
Any further?
I talked to Colonel Thomas with my questions, and every, I was satisfied with this, what we're doing here. I think it's necessary, and it's an opportunity for us to get something that our taxpayers don't have to fully fund anyway, and it's going to come a time, if not already here, that we have to have these cameras.
Yes, and as a final comment, Board of Commissioners, the policy is going to be law-abiding. We're going to, we've already done the research when it comes to the state law, the disclosure, we're going to work with the court system, and the policy's going to be a model policy that maybe other agencies will look at and follow.
I think the body cams show, I think we've needed the body cams for a long time, especially working in law enforcement, there's no doubt about it, and it shows transparency on the part of the Sheriff's Office and the county, and it can definitely, as you said before, collect evidence in terms of what the reality is and what's not. So I applaud the effort. I think it's a great grant.
Thank you, and I think the citizens will win in the long run.
I think in today's environment, it's almost a must that we have documentation, and the best way to do that, everybody's got a camera walking around, so it's good that we have our own documentation of events and how they transpire. It can clear the officer, or it can either let you know if you've got a problem with the officer, also good for collecting evidence.
That's exactly correct, and Chairman, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I think if we find out that our officers did something wrong, depending on what it is, then there's going to be some corrective action taken. It could be training, it could be, you know, other action, but I think, like I stated before, cameras tell the truth, and they have to be taken in context, not just a clip, the whole thing. And we're going to follow the state law.
Yes, Sheriff, I have a comment or question. Does the volume come with that as well? Because it's important what is said sometimes as much as what is, what action is taken as well. Like you said, context, and does it have volume, or is it just film whenever you have those cameras?
Yes, Commissioner, the audio is going to be recorded. Now, obviously, we have to make sure that the volume is going to be readable or something we can listen to. Now, are cameras perfect? No, they're not. But what we do is, we, you know, obviously, the commands of the officer, and if it's within hearing range, the cameras will pick it up as well. If it's out of the hearing range, obviously it won't.
Okay. Well, what range do they usually, would that mechanism have? What kind of range are we talking about?
We will work with the vendors to make sure that whatever the officer hears, the camera will hear.
Sheriff, who, now who's going to have the responsibility of storing and maintaining the equipment?
Well, Commissioner, the ultimate responsibility is with every agency head. You cannot delegate responsibility. But what I will do is, I will delegate the authority to make sure that this program is managed correctly. Obviously, it's going to be supervised. The vendor that we deal with is going to be responsible to me, to make sure, or to the agency, that the data is going to be available. So yes, it, you know, with any new program, there always going to be growing, you know, growth, but I think in the long run, when we find something that needs to be corrected, we contact the vendor, and the vendor, by contract, is responsible to our agency to make sure it's fixed.
Is this position and this program, and is this program going to require more personnel being on staff to maintain this?
Not in our case, Commissioner. What we're going to do is, we're going to handle it in-house by proper, the automatic upload and everything, but we're going to train our staff, our supervisory staff, to make sure that they can draw the data and maybe make, put it on a thumb drive, or a CD, or a DVD, to make sure that, you know, it can be reviewed. So we can do that in-house. We don't need any additional manpower. I would rather have, we do need additional manpower, and that's going to come up during the budget season, but I would rather have them out on the street to respond to citizens.
Okay. Now, Ms. Griffin, is everything we got here today, is that within the guidelines of the monies that was allocated and so for this project?
I believe so. We're working with the county finance, and I believe that's the case.
Commissioner Scott, I can verify that they did have $45,000 in this year's budget towards a body camera project, and in addition to that, our finance officer had approved that they use lapsed salaries from positions that have not been filled this year to pay for the rest of the match for this year. There will be an annual match that will be associated with this.
That's correct, and we understand that we have a shortage in our staffing. We're going to use that money, and we're going to add to a budget amendment to make sure that it goes for the right place.
So the remaining budgetary, now the process, there is going to be added to the budget for this to continue?
Yeah. Well, we have a budget year coming up. I cannot speak for everybody, and I can't speak for the manager, but we're going to work with the manager.
Okay.
But I think still in the long run, the match is going to be, if you take a look at the cost of prolonged litigation, which by the way, there has been litigation in the past, we won them all, but it takes money, and it takes expensive, expensive taxpayer money to defend against them. But if we have the evidence right there, very clear, what really happened in the total context, I think it's going to be good for the county.
Now, no way am I against this. It's not if, it's when. We, now we need this, okay? Last Wednesday morning, I picked up the phone and called the District Attorney, and he told me himself, the last 10 cases that he's been involved in, that law enforcement involved in, those cameras save the cities and the towns that he's responsible for, because they had it recorded. And I applaud you for doing this. I applaud you to bring it, to get the effort done. I just want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing the t's. I am 100% behind it. Good luck with it.
I think you said a key point, Sheriff. You said something that's what it's going to do in the long run and save us money in terms of long-term litigation, because it's never going to get to that point, and it's going to save an officer, it's going to save a victim, whatever. You don't need to drag things out, and so that in itself, right there, and me being former law enforcement, I know the significance of body cams and what they can and can't do, and I think it's a good move, because it will save money in terms of litigation, false complaints, and stuff like that, where the DA can look at it and make a decision and move on, and don't have to worry about the money or any other things as far as litigation's concerned. I also know that, I applaud the effort, that you're going to have that vendor come in, he's going to teach you how to use the body cams and stuff like that, and I like the idea of getting somebody in-house to get brushed up, you know, brushed up in speed in terms of how to operate this equipment and the storage data and all that stuff, and I can see it within the department. I think it's a good move. I think it's an economic move, in my opinion.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Commissioner, and the Board, because I speak to the Board as a general, but one example comes to mind. We have evaluated several body cameras. In one particular case, because of coincidence, there was an allegation made of profiling. When we reviewed, you know, with an open mind, the video, because it happened to be an officer that was evaluating a body camera, and we actually invited the family member to come and view it, because it was not profiling, it was basically trying to save a young man from being run over. So, you know, that's just one example about the truth.
I think too, Sheriff, that this is a response, not only of your deputies, but the community as well. So when deputies are out there, the body camera is there, it allows them to know that they're secure in making their decisions, because that body cam will verify it, and also with the citizens in the county, that it's also a response to their desires. So when they're put in a situation, they know whatever's taking place is being documented. So everybody that's involved feels a lot better about the situation, what's taking place, because it's being documented for everybody to see. So I think going forward, not only saving money with litigation, but it's also will reassure the community and all our officers out there that this is.
Exactly, and obviously, Board of Commissioners, we are absolutely very aware of privacy concerns, so the policy is going to address those privacy concerns. Obviously, there are some places we don't go with body cameras on, and you can.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Item C is Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program Grant. Our Assistant County Manager Ms. Sherri Slater will present that item. Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Several years ago, this Board of Commissioners set as one of your primary goals in the annual budget process for staff to explore and find ways to mitigate the mental health and substance abuse crisis in our community. We have brought you several grants over the years, starting with getting the DIX Crisis Center up and running, grants to implement training for our law enforcement on mental health crisis and how to respond, as well as the Health IM tool that has been implemented to help the officers, as body cameras you just heard, to help the officers have that assurance and the backup for the decisions that they're making. Recently, we also received a grant that helped us implement a mental health case manager in the detention center, and this will build off of, the grant that we're going to talk about this morning will build off of that program as well, and bring medication-assisted treatment to the detention center. When we have folks come into detention and they're already on the medication-assisted treatment, or they need to be, they cause the detention center extra problems, as well as extra expense, to address those issues, because they can't get that treatment in the detention center. So this grant that we're bringing you today is from the Department of Justice. It is for $899,943, and it provides medication-assisted treatment with a case manager, as well as the medication would go through our jail medical facility, and would reduce costs in recidivism, some folks that we can actually get on treatment, so that when they're released, they don't go right back to that same behavior. It also would reduce costs for pregnant women, as many times pregnant women that are in detention are also very high risk, and they may have to be sent to safekeeping in Raleigh, which costs us more. Even if they're able to be maintained here, they have more doctor's appointments because of the issues with coming off of the drugs that they're on. So having the medication-assisted treatment would be able to help us reduce the cost, as well as the manpower, to get them back and forth to the hospital and things such as that. So that is the goal of this grant. We would respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners accept the three-year grant award in the amount of $899,943, and authorize the County Manager to sign associated paperwork with the grant. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I got a quick question for you, Sherri. Does this link to when they're released as well?
So we do have, in the case management program, some release follow-up. So we have their counseling or therapy sessions set up, first appointments set up before they leave detention, and follow-up to make sure those first appointments were kept. The counselor also works with them on making sure that they're, that they have a ride to the appointment, and things like that.
I mean, I fully support this completely. I think it's a great idea, and it's money out there that we could use for our detention center. I'm just questioning whether or not, if we link it to them, once they're released, you can't start Matt and then stop, you know, with treatment, so.
Absolutely.
So I just want to make sure they get the follow-up treatment that they need, once they're released.
Absolutely. And we have, we are working very hard to connect all of these pieces, so that they're a nice continuum of care for the folks in our community.
Hearing no further. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D is Albert Ellis Airport ARPA AIP 45 Grant Acceptance. Mr. Chris Weiss, our airport director, will present that. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman, and the Manager. Before you, today, we have three grants. The first one is the ARPA Grant AIP Number 45. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 became law in March of 2021, and includes funds to support and stabilize government and industry, including airports affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Congress passed relief bills to fund additional pandemic-related expenses and activities, and to backfill some of the traditional revenues that declined with passenger traffic, and to promote system stability. These grant funds are restricted, and provide, this specific grant provides funds for concession relief for eligible airport concessionaires at primary airports. Airports were not included, however, most airports are also granting limited rent and fee abatement to airlines. As a part of this, all-eligible tenants, including concessionaires, are proposed to receive rent and landing fee waivers equal to three months or more based on the FAA's formula. As a part of the American Rescue Plan Act, the airport has been allocated $140,244 specifically designated for eligible airport concession rental relief. Further, it is proposed to extend this relief to eligible terminal tenants, including the airlines, which brings the total rental abatement amount to $299,744, which will be funded by airport revenues and prior relief funds. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept FAA AIP Grant Number 45 in the amount of $140,244, grant rent and fee waivers of up to $299,744, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the associated documents on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Now, here a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So tenants who paid their rent will get a refund? Is that what?
A credit, a credit toward future rents.
Credit for future, okay. So this money will go back into our community?
Any further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Albert Ellis Airport ARPA AIP 46 Grant Acceptance. Mr. White.
Yes, sir. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 also included funds to support and stabilize the government and industry, including airports. These grant funds are restricted. AIP 46 is for economic relief to airports to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19 pandemic. Airports may use these funds for costs related to operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial services, in combating the spread of the pathogen at the airport, and debt service payments. As a part of the American Rescue Plan Act, the airport has been allocated $2,438,093 for operating expenses. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept FAA AIP Grant Number 46 in the amount of $2,438,093, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the associated documents on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Now, here a motion?
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just got a question.
Yes, sir.
The grants are good, and I'm just, I'm looking at the paragraph where it says they're related to operations personnel. Does that include salaries?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hearing no further. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Airport State Grant Award for Runway and Taxi Rehabilitation Project. Mr. White?
Okay. For the third and final one, the, on April 19th of last year, the Board of Commissioners approved the Airport Runway and Taxi Rehabilitation Project. This project includes the construction of a holding pad at the end of, or near the end of runway 23. The holding pads are useful to reduce congestion during air traffic delays, and to provide a place for pilots to conduct engine runs and tests prior to takeoff. This 52,570 square feet of 10-inch-thick asphalt will allow two commercial-sized aircraft to pass side by side, and is fully lit and marked for pilot safety. The North Carolina Department of Transportation, State Department, or excuse me, State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP, has awarded a grant in the amount of $300,000 to be used for this project, and the balance of this project is funded by FAA Airport Improvement Program Grants. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the SCDOT STIP Grant for the runway 23 hold pad, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the associated documents on behalf of the county.
Hearing a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Unpaid taxes or liens on real property, I guess that's Mr. Harry Smith?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's that time of the year that we're required to report to you the amount of taxes that are unpaid liens on real property per North Carolina General Statute 105-369A, and at the time the agenda was prepared, we had 7,094 bills that were still outstanding on real estate for a total of $5,383,354.60. And I would like to comment that that also includes the municipal taxes that we're responsible for collecting, so that includes not only amounts due to the county, but also the city of Jacksonville and the other towns. And I am pleased to report that the number has dropped to about 6,300 bills and 4.6 million since this item was prepared for the agenda. Therefore, we respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners approve the total unpaid tax. unpaid taxes that are liens on real property or the report of those taxes.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? The, you say it's dropping, is it going down every day, or is that just?
Yes, sir. We're still receiving payments every day.
Okay. And that's the delinquent taxes just for twenty twenty-one?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And there's a portion of that, that's the city that we collect for, for all the cities?
With the exception of Surf City.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, any, any further discussion? Hope everybody pays their taxes. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Tax liens, section H, got you again there, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Following the, the report of unpaid taxes, we also need the board's approval to advertise the tax liens on real property. This is required under North Carolina General Statute one oh five dash three sixty-nine C. And the, the county is required, or tax collector is required to advertise county liens by posting a notice to the tax liens at least one time in newspaper, having general circulation in our taxing unit. So we respectfully request to advertise unpaid taxes on March the fourteenth of twenty twenty-two, and we'd request that the Board of Commissioners approve that request for advertising on that date.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? How many, and how many partials is that now? Did you say that we're going to advertise?
Well, it's sixty-three hundred right now, but we expect that number will, will continue to decrease until we submit the list to the newspaper.
What is the, what is the cutoff date for somebody to come in and take care of that before it goes into the paper?
We would suggest that they have them paid by the end of February because we do have about a week or so lead time before, to get the list to the newspaper before they actually publish it. So we've been telling everybody end of February to make sure.
So right now, as, today, we have six thousand three hundred, is that partials or people?
Bills, number of bills. Could be, yeah.
No, partials could be more than.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Animal Services Advisory Commission, I'll turn that over to Ms. Griffin. And I will say that we had one person that came in today that's got their name in and their application in. I appreciate them coming in and letting us see who you are. A lot of times we appoint folks and we don't know what they even look like. But anyway, thank you for coming in today. Good luck to you on, on whatever the board decides.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We are needing to make one appointment to the Animal Services Advisory Committee. This committee is composed of seven members who are appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners and serve at your pleasure. The Advisory Committee was created to advise the Onslow County Animal Services Director with respect to animal services matters. The one vacant seat is in seat seven, Citizen at Large. Both Ms. Kathy Burns and Ms. Susan Passy expressed an interest in this seat. Both submitted citizen participation applications. These are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. At this time, we respectfully request your consideration of either Ms. Burns or Ms. Passy, and we will be doing this by ballot. And I believe our county attorney has picked up our ballots. Our second appointment tonight is for the board, or today, is for the Board of Equalization and Review. This board is comprised of five members. They are annually apported, appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The current term for the Board of Equalization and Review expires on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. The current members are Mr. Philip Mercer, Mr. Todd Dougherty, Mr. Dennis Bragg, Mr. Charles Rawls, and Mr. Roger Riggs. They have all expressed a desire to continue serving on the board for the next term. Mr. Philip Mercer is also willing to continue serving as chairman of that board. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. All of these individuals have filled out an application and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. At this time, I respectfully request that the board consider the reappointment of Mr. Philip Mercer, Mr. Todd Dougherty, Mr. Dennis Bragg, Mr. Charles Rawls, and Mr. Roger Riggs to the Board of Equalization and Review, and also appoint Mr. Philip Mercer as chairman for a one-year term expiring February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of these appointments?
They're going to have a busy year.
I believe they will.
I appreciate the, them being willing to continue service. It's going to be good to have experienced people on that board this year.
Me too. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Yes, these folks are, when we, we have revaluation coming up, and I'm sure some people might want to be heard, and this is a group that hears that appeals for valuation, and I'm sure they will be very fair about it because all of these people are icons in each one of those communities. The next item is consent agenda. We didn't have anything that we moved from the front to the back. And the next item is Ms. Griffin, the manager's comments, and I will now turn it over to Ms. Griffin.
Thank you so much, Chairman, Brian, Commissioners. I have a few comments for you today. We have not gotten our total of COVID-19 cases yet. Staff is still working on totaling those. However, we have been notified this morning that unfortunately, we have had nine additional deaths due to COVID-19 just since Thursday. So since our report Thursday, we've had nine individuals. Two of those were over the age of sixty-five, and all the others, seven, were under the age of sixty-five. And that brings our community to three hundred and thirty-six deaths that have been attributed to COVID-19. I would like to say that we really appreciate our staff, particularly those who are out serving our citizens face-to-face, who continue to work hard despite being very much short-staffed. And we've had many staff members that have been out sick during the course of the most recent variant of COVID-19. And I just would like to thank our, our general public for being patient and being kind to the staff members that are available to fill in for all those folks. It has been challenging. Another thing I would like to let the public know is we will be sharing our highlights from twenty twenty-one and all of the good things that have happened and all that our departments have achieved in the next few weeks. For example, we'll be giving you information such as, in the past calendar year, ninety-five of the children in our community that were in foster care achieved permanency, which means they were either adopted or there was another permanent placement for them. And ninety-five is, is a great number. On the sad side, one of the things that we have to keep up with in our community, and we continue to have our, our grant money and other, other advances to try to take care of our opioid epidemic. But overall, we had a thousand twenty-nine overdoses in Onslow County in, in the past year. That is a thirty-one percent increase from the prior year. So we are a community in need, and we look forward to doing more to address that. We also had a three percent increase to calls that came into nine-one-one. Ray Silences out there today, his, his team took a total of one hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-one emergency calls during the past calendar year, and that's an awful lot of phone calls. And we appreciate them very much. That's all I have for today unless you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Do we have, it was sort of early today, but did, did we have any information on the hospital stay? I mean, how many people we have in?
We do. I heard from Dr. Penny Burlingame Deal this morning, and she had forty-seven COVID-positive patients at Onslow Memorial Hospital, and that, those are people that were, that are being treated because of COVID-19, not that they haven't in addition to the reason they were being admitted. So forty-seven were being treated, and there were three in ICU. That is down from Friday. On Friday, there were fifty-four that were COVID-positive, being treated at Onslow Memorial and seven in ICU. But we continue to see a strain on our healthcare community and a rise in our fatalities, which typically follows those hospitalization numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. We will now move on to Commissioner's comments, and I will start with Commissioner Scott.
Good afternoon. I've got a couple of things. Now, the county manager has, has already stated the thousand and twenty-nine cases that, you know, that we've had. But I wanted to add to that just a little bit. Onslow County has one of the finest programs around. We have community paramedics that is willing to go out and assist you in any way that they can to get your loved ones taken care of. I encourage you to use that tool that we have available to you. They are experts in what they're do, they're, they're here to help you. And if we don't know you need help, I'm, I'm just reaching out to you. Please call the Community Paramedic Program. It's an outstanding organization, and they do try to help out. Second thing, the Southwest Stallions, for the first time, went to the third round of individual dual-team wrestling championships in Bun High School this past Wednesday. In our eyes, they are all champions. They, you know, they didn't make it that night, but you know something? Over the past several years, the coaching staff at Southwest High School has put a professional staff together to teach our young men and women the, the sports and the athletic talents that we have. And I want to give hats off to them. And Tim, congratulations on making it to the third round. The regional championships are coming up this weekend, Aiden, Grifton. And shortly after that, we're going to go, now be going to the state championships the following weekend. I encourage all those young athletes, just do your very absolute very best, and I thank you for participating in the wonderful sport of wrestling. Lastly, our airport manager. I was out there during this last weather event that we had. Tim, I sent you a picture of the snowplow being used going down the runway. So you're going to have to get with Tim to get, and go to get you a copy of that picture, Mr. White. But he stayed out there every night to our airport to make sure that things were right. My hat's off to you, sir. Appreciate it. The county, the county employees, guys, just keep striving. I'm proud of you. We know we need you. We need you at work healthy, so do the right things, and God bless you. Good afternoon.
Commissioner Price?
Yes, about a week and a half ago, I enjoyed being a judge at the Crystal Coast Classic Speech and Debate Tournament, was held at Centerview Baptist Church. A lot of impressive young people, between the ages of twelve to eighteen, who impressed me with their ability, skill, and knowledge on various expository speeches and that type of thing. You had speeches from, that ranged, again, but from Ted Cruz's filibuster to, you had JFK's inaugural, you had Mahala's speech at the UN, you know, just different examples of speeches. And if you want to feel good about young people, go to an event like that. You'll leave feeling that tomorrow, we, we got a shot. We're going to be better than we are. So I thank that group for the invitation. Also attended a meeting this past week of Topsail Island Shoreland Protection and Pender County Tourism put on, on protecting the beach and the waterways of Topsail Island from pollution. Some good discussion there of some steps individuals can take to maintain Topsail Island's natural beauty, which is a major asset for us, and I appreciate the invite to that. Other than that, have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neff?
Just got a couple of things to say. First off, Ms. Passy, I appreciate you coming here and for your selection. I think you'll do good, and I just want to say congratulations. And for the Sheriff's Department, I think it's a good move with the grant. You guys, you done good on that grant, and the body cams are definitely necessary, and I think it's a big step in the right direction as far as transparency is concerned, so I applaud that effort. I can go on and on about the, the county staff, but they continue to do a remarkable job. Our county manager, assistant county managers continue to, to oversee a, or oversee a large, kind of like city, so to speak, for Onslow County, and they're making sure all their i's are crossed, or dotted, and all their t's are crossed. I want to thank you guys again for all your hard work. And I'm going to say this, and I'm saying it kind of passionately, you know, there are people that consider the county should not put out the COVID reports, and I've addressed this at the last meeting, okay? Well, I think the COVID reports are necessary, very necessary. As you can see, we had eleven deaths as of last Thursday, and from that time until Monday today, we've had nine additional deaths. And everybody keeps saying that it's because of the elderly, if they're over sixty-five. I got news for you. I got my best friend and my wife's best friend, his wife, died yesterday at sixteen-hundred hours of COVID. She was in the hospital for COVID, no underlying medical conditions, retired Marine, physically fit. She didn't get the vaccination. She contracted COVID and she died. And she died of complete, complete organ failure. I've been in touch with my, my best friend for about four straight weeks, every day, giving me a text, trying all kinds of stuff. She tried, when she first got diagnosed, tried to use that, whatever that's called, Iver medicine or whatever it's called. It didn't work. I tried desperately to get him and his wife to, to get the vaccination. Now, I'm not, I am not for mandates for vaccinations or for masks. That's each individual responsibility. I'm just telling you from a personal perspective that I urge you that do not have the vaccination to get the vaccination because it can help. My wife was, she had COVID after she'd been vaccinated and her immune system is compromised, and all it was, was a bad cold. And her doctor was surprised, but told her that the reason why she didn't get even more sick was because of the fact she had been vaccinated. So everybody in here has had somebody affected by COVID, some closer than most. Like I said, my best friend, his wife, you know, he's like a brother to me. It's, it hurts when you knew that it could have been possibly prevented. We'll never know. So I just want everybody to know out there that, you know, if you don't like the statistics that we put out for COVID, pass by. Just, just go right on, pass it and go to something else on Facebook or the website, whatever it might be. I don't care. Just don't make negative comments about people that want those statistics. There are more people in this county that want those statistics to know what, what the COVID rate is in Onslow County, where the clusters are. But some of the questions we see are just ludicrous. You know, if you don't want to read about it, don't read about it. But it's provided, it's provided by our health department, through our county manager, to you as a public service, and they're doing their job and going over and beyond what they're responsible for. So just please try to stay safe, do the best that you can, and be aware of your neighbors and be aware of your friends, okay? Because it is our responsibility as well to them as theirs is to us. So thank you for coming out. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to welcome Robert and Sharon Clannots that are here today. I don't know if I said their name right, but Sharon is Pat Walker's daughter, and they're here representing the Veterans, Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation. And I want to thank Ms. Passy for being here. It was nice to know who we're, we're voting for, for a change. We appreciate that, and I hope you all have a great day. Thank you.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Everybody have a good day and have a nice evening, and that's all I have.
Vice Chairman Foster?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a wonderful afternoon, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. I wanted to welcome one person that's in the audience, Bishop Zinnerman. He's an icon in our community, got a big church following, and thank you, sir, for being here. Appreciate you participating and coming to see what your county government's doing. Next week, the fourteenth, I think it's the fourteenth, that we have in our budget workshop. Next week, the 14th, I think it's the 14th, that we have in our budget workshop here, and Steve Myers, we're going to be looking at what y'all are requesting for school funding, and it ain't, it ain't pretty, but we'll, we'll get through it. But anyway, we'll, we welcome everybody to come to the workshop, it's open to the public, and I think it's at 10 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
10 o'clock? So that's a couple of things that's going on with the county. Susan Passy, congratulations on your appointment to Animal Advisory. I think with your credentials and everything, you would be absolutely a good fit for over there, because now our animal services department is really expanding, and there's always a big demand for increased service and increased capacity, so I think we get responsible people working in that capacity, and I appreciate you being, I don't, like I said earlier, I don't, I don't remember too many people coming and speaking and introducing themselves, but I'm glad that you did, and at least we can put a name, a face with the name now. Thank you. That's, that's all I, I have, unless there's something else we need to talk about. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all for being here.[1774.65]